Northwest Public Radio, KRFA 91.7 Moscow Pullman, KNWV.
I'd like to call to order that Wednesday, May 25, 2016, meeting of Moscow's Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with the first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes of May 11th. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions?
We'll go for approval.
You beat me to it.
And you want a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes approved. See, correspondence, we have that one letter, is that all, or Mike, or?
Yeah, I have it as an agenda item, so I figure we just discuss it at number nine.
Oh, that's what that is. Okay, now it makes sense. All right, we'll defer to that. And that was, anybody else, is there any other correspondence?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, all right. Transportation Commission meeting report by Joel.
The Transportation Commission met two weeks ago, on the 12th. Major topic of the discussion was complete streets policy. We reviewed what a number of other cities have been doing, and it turns out there's a wide variety of statements of policy. And our staff representative will be proposing a draft for us at the next meeting. We also talked a while about bicycle terrorism. It turns out that there is an organization based in Pullman, but actually encompassing both Moscow and Pullman, which has in the past put together a bicycle terrorism brochure and maps, and is in the process of redoing those, updating those. And we saw a copy of what they did before, which looked excellent, and Phil Cook is cooperating with that group. So that's at least a part of what's going to be happening in terms of bicycle terrorism. I suspect we'll probably discuss both of those topics again at the meeting in two weeks. I believe it's June 9th, the second Tuesday in June, be meeting 4 to 6 in this room.
So we'll have an update, because we don't meet June 8th?
8th.
This year, I mean this month.
Oh, okay, so we're not meeting.
Right. So we'll get an update.
I believe Transportation is meeting on the 9th. At least it's tentatively scheduled.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is open microphone. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak to the Commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda, nor currently pending before Planning and Zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is any, no, Victoria is here, but she's, okay, well, moving on, I guess, Mike, we'll turn it over to you for the off-street parking landscape ordinance review.
Well, last time, we had gone over this topic at the last meeting, and David Rock from the Tree Commission was here, and he provided a lot of good information. For some of you that missed the meeting, it'd probably be a good idea to go back and review that, just to see what he had discussed and what we were reviewing the topic. But I've got an abbreviated version, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, and then provide a little background to maybe some commissioners that were absent during that meeting. So we had looked at, you know, we're covering our parking lot landscape standards, and we had provided about four or five examples of developments around town that utilized our current standard, which is, once you get above 50 stalls in your parking lot, then you're required to put a couple divisions into bays, so you have these landscape islands. The minimum width is three feet, and then you have an exterior landscaped buffer, which is three feet as well. The exterior one contains shrubs, two-foot-tall shrubs, every six feet on center. And then these landscape islands, we provide trees at a ratio of one tree every 10 stalls. And so you have some flexibility about where those are provided. And in this circumstance, they put them in the landscape islands. And so, kind of reviewed, I guess the observation on this was that the shrubs are, the shrubs seem sufficient, but there's no trees in this row. So with the exterior buffer, you know, it gives you some flexibility with the placement of trees, but they ended up, you know, and maybe in the landscape islands and not on the exterior to provide shade there. This was a view of the internal landscape islands, and I think everybody that went out there and taken a look at these sites, the common observation was that they're too, they're not wide enough. You know, three feet doesn't achieve that. And David's contribution on that is that you probably at least need about six feet in width in order to have a tree survive, you know, have some longevity there for trees that are planted in those islands. We looked at Applebee's, kind of same scenario. They had the three-foot-wide landscape islands with a couple of trees. David has some, a little bit of testimony about the conflict between parking lot lights and trees, and then just selecting appropriate trees. I think these are, he described these as ornamental trees. And this was the similar landscape buffer to Sherry's, this is at Applebee's as well. So kind of providing the visual buffer that we're looking for, it's just devoid of any trees in that area. And we jumped over to Walmart's new parking lot. So when they remodeled and expanded the store, they had totally redeveloped the parking lot. And this is to largely our landscape island, landscape buffer standards. But it also, we also have some additional requirements with the large retail, the big box ordinance that we have in place, that required additional landscaping and pedestrian ways in the parking lot. So we'd looked at what they put in, the shrubs and the trees and the islands, and then the sidewalks. And we jumped over to Fairfield Inn and the Jams development, looked at some of the islands and the buffers in Fairfield first. They've got some trees, not a whole lot of shrubbery or ground cover. This is an example of, David talked about site distances and trying to go away from evergreens, so like the evergreen tree here presents a, you know, could present a, some type of site distance hazard for cars backing up, you know, cars going around that radius as they go through the parking lot. And so, you know, he talked about those things that I know that I hadn't really thought about, you know, before. So I thought it was good that he brought, you know, kind of those things up. And I think at the end, the Commission wanted to maybe include some language in our ordinance that discusses low, you know, shrubs that may not exceed maybe three feet in size in order to not present any type of safety hazard as you're going through, you know, site distances in the parking lot. This was the University Crossing development, so the one that Jams is in. And they did a really nice job. They had kind of the exterior buffer that had some river rock, and then shrubs and trees. And they also have some swales incorporated there. So they have the, you know, the curb cuts here and all the water of the parking lot. Instead of detaining the water in stormwater catch basins, they've done, they've gone this route and developed kind of a bio-swell in order to filter some of the stormwater. And they get away from the cost of having to put in a stormwater detention basin and pipe it a long distance to a city stormwater main. And that was a good example, same development of about an eight, nine-foot-wide island with a mixture of some different types of shrubs and a tree. And then the last one we looked at was the new Joseph Street Ballfields property. And we had compared, you know, done quite a bit of research on other jurisdictions, and this pretty much fit the, I think, the Boise example. So it was one island per every 12 stalls, and the island widths were about eight feet wide. And so they have a couple of trees usually per every, I guess we'd say this was maybe two islands if they're up against the double bay, so they've got usually two trees and then a mixture of shrubs on each one. And then we had just, staff had put together three examples. I think one was our current ordinance with the three-foot-wide islands and the three-foot exterior buffers. And then we had maybe the Boise example with the one island every 12 stalls, eight-foot-wide island, and that would be the middle one here. And then we had, I think a Lewiston example, which added, almost doubled the amount of islands. And so then we calculated the percentages, because some of you, if you recall the research that we did, about half of these jurisdictions ended up going with a percentage of interior landscape island space, and then the others did kind of a one-per-certain-number-of-stalls count. And so we wanted to go ahead and see what the, you know, put those on even keel and see what the percentage is equal to a one-per-stall basis. And so this was ours, our current standards, which is coming in at about 3.3% of the interior landscaping, which is really on the low end. I think probably the minimum that we saw was around 5% at all the other jurisdictions. This was kind of an example, just a different view with the same, same look, so this would be your standard, I guess, Walmart development. This would be more of the Joseph Street Ballfields and Boise Island code. This is coming in at about a little under 6% of the interior landscaping percentage. And they've got 380, you know, this one was 358 stalls at 3.3%. This one ended up being 384 stalls, and we took the same area, so 384 spaces. So you actually gained spaces while you're still increasing the interior landscaping just with going with those exterior, you know, the end caps for the islands instead of just the one continuous three-foot-wide buffer.
So you actually get more parking spaces?
You do, yeah, yeah. And then that would be the 3D view of what that would look like. And then we went to the Lewiston model. I think they had a certain number of stalls, they required about 8% interior landscaping. And so that was, is what that would look like. It's more of a one-per-eight, one-per-nine ratio, but you have a little bit less, went from 384 to about 367, and you've got 8% of that area is landscaped on the interior. So, you know, at the end of that exercise with David's input, we had kind of some staff recommendations, and so we had gone through those. And I had just prepared an ordinance that incorporated a lot of the things that we wanted to see done. And I've got a couple of different versions, one that, it's hard for me to read, once you start striking through a lot of the text, it's hard to follow. So I've got a clean copy, which is on the screen, and then I've got the ordinance that has all the struck text in it. So it was, you know, when you look through it before, I think that what we've done with this, the main thing is gone between the two categories of exterior landscaping and interior landscaping. It was a little disjointed before, where you had kind of the, what the requirements were for certain types, like the tree, right here in the beginning. It kind of defines what the landscaping needs to be, it needs to be seven foot overall. Shrubs need to be two feet in height. And then you had to go through and then read through the other sections, and then always have to go back to the beginning to get that you have to have, you know, what size plantings you need. So just personal experience with working with other people and architects and builders going through this, it's a lot cleaner, and I know that they had a hard time, you know, understanding what the actual requirements were in this current language. And there is also a little bit of redundancy between, we've got, where we used to have two sections, where one was landscaping adjacent to the public right-of-way, and then perimeter landscaping relative to adjacent properties. And they almost said the exact same thing, the buffer and the number of plantings was exactly the same. And so why not just compress that down into one section? And so that's what we've done, is we've got, kind of struck the portion at the beginning that talks about the overall height and size of the trees and shrubs, and just included that in the text of each category. So, you know, going through, we didn't change any of the purpose, but we can, you know, look through there and certainly do that, yeah.
And the reason I have a question is Dennis brought up an excellent question last time, which was, what's the purpose of the landscaping standards? And because reading this, it seems primarily to be aesthetic, and we talked about all the jobs, the work that landscaping does in terms of reduction of the urban heat island effect, effect on stormwater treatment, all those other things that landscaping does in a parking lot, and that it might be good to just state that upfront within the purpose.
Yeah.
And that way, it clarifies that this is not just about aesthetics, this is doing many things, many jobs at once that are beneficial.
That really struck me when I, when I first read it. And you've got traffic safety, you've got noise and visual buffers, I mean, and the heat issues. I mean, I think we really need to emphasize those, because the attractive is pretty subjective, but those other issues are pretty concrete issues. So I'd like to see us move forward on that.
So we sort of update to reflect the way things are going in terms of swales and, you know, getting, setting up for on-site stormwater treatment and all that.
And I know that was one of Deb's comments early on, was where do we say that? And this is the, you know, correct spot to list that. So I didn't want to go ahead and change the whole thing without having you guys tell me to do it, so. But yeah, I can do that, take a crack at it, and then bring that back next time, certainly.
Yeah, good. So that was, sounds like we're agreeing on that one.
And then, so, you know, moving through, we didn't really, I think when we update our, right now, our definitions of a parking lot or area are just that, it's a, you know, off-street parking lot, which contains five or more stalls. So we'll have that in the definitions section, but I think it's always good, maybe just list that there, so you don't have to go back and forth between the definitions to understand when these requirements kick in or not. So that, that's what we currently have, but I figured that we would just leave that in there just for clarity. And then looking at the exterior landscaping section, like I mentioned before, we had condensed this, so it used to have the, adjacent to the right-of-way or adjacent to other properties. So now we've combined that into the one paragraph, kept it at three feet, and then explained that we've added one tree of one-and-a-half-inch caliper every 40 lineal feet. And then kept the shrub standard the same, so we have one shrub every six feet.
So the tree, are you still gonna, you're gonna have just three feet, or are you gonna make them expand that to six feet as well for the trees or?
Well, with the, with, primarily with the three-foot buffers adjacent to the public right-of-way, we have that big distance between the buffer and then the back of the sidewalk. So in reality, you end up having, you know, six, seven feet. If we expand it to, say, the eight feet that we're proposing for interior islands, then all of a sudden, we've got this, you know, maybe 20-foot-wide area, which, you know, is just gonna eat up a lot of space. And so that's what we're thinking, that's what we're thinking on that. We have, previously, we had a requirement that upon planting, each shrub has to be two feet in height. And that's always been a challenge, and I think that with a lot of other jurisdictions, they go towards like gallon size, pot size. And so I have a next slide where I talk to David about maybe his recommendation on what to do with that, and we had taken a look at Boise, so I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we wanted to add that the shrubs, upon maturity, shall provide a visual relief of minimum of three feet in height. That's what we currently have, but we wanted to add the 50% chubby evergreen. And we, you know, kind of talked about exterior versus interior, and it was primarily the exterior, we wanted to be evergreen, so it wasn't gonna have that site obstruction when you're going through the parking lot on the islands. So, you know, that rounds up the exterior. And then moving on to the interior, right now, we've got that threshold for where interior landscaping is required. Once you get to 50 stalls, which when we did the research, all the other jurisdictions, you know, between, maybe one started at six stalls, you're required to have interior landscaping, but about the average was maybe one, or, you know, 12 stalls, and so, 12 to 20 stalls. And so we ended up putting a threshold at the 20 or more parking stalls when the interior landscape islands are kicked in. And then we kept some of the similar language about visual relief, apparent appearance of large areas of lost surface, congested appearance, you know, we could certainly rework that a little bit as well, if you think that needs to be updated. And then we decided on eight feet in width, and then thought we'd put some clarification as to how that's measured. So eight feet is measured inside of perimeter curbing and the length equivalent to the adjacent parking stall. And that there'd be one island every 12 parking stalls evenly distributed in the parking lot. And so, you know, I think that this gives some flexibility, instead of saying that you'll have one island every 12 stalls, and if you get to 13 stalls and there's not an island, then you're out of compliance with the code. And it gives us a little flexibility, like the University Crossing with Jams example. They have 13 stalls up front, to say that they would, you know, can't have 13, and then the two end islands, you know, it just provides us a little bit more flexibility with determining, you know, it's the, the standard's one per 12, but needs to be evenly distributed, gives us some flexibility with working with people to, you know, have a little common sense when looking at the islands. So, yeah, there's all kinds of factors. So, you know, that's helpful, to keep that a little open-ended. And then the landscape, you know, specify landscape islands need to be protected by curbing, and they have to contain one tree of one-and-a-half-inch caliper. Low shrubs, you know, we talked about the site distance, and I did notice that in other jurisdictions with interior landscaping, they'll say low shrubs instead of just shrubs. And so, you know, kind of hammer that home, that we want things that aren't, or shrubs that aren't over three feet in height, in order to, you know, not present those site distance issues. And then vegetative ground cover. And then I wanted to clarify the, like, the landscape islands, so maybe Nell's questions from la, question from last time about the landscape islands adjacent to a double row of parking, is that, you know, one island, or is that two islands? So, you know, on the ground, it looks like just one island, it's just exceptionally long, it's the length of two stalls. And so, you know, just so there's no doubt, and some of the other jurisdictions had this in their ordinances. So landscape islands adjacent to a double row of parking, as shown in Figure 1, so we figured we'd put an illustration in there to, you know, help people out with that one. Shall contain two trees of one-and-a-half-inch caliper. And so this is, you know, something, obviously, this isn't the final, I was just taking this example from Boise, but this would be the scenario. So if there's, you know, adjacent to a double row of stalls, then you're required to have two trees, and then the shrubs and the ground cover, just so, you know, people are clear on that.
So does the vegetative ground cover, I mean, does that eliminate the option of using, like, the river rock or the?
We're hoping so. At least, in many cases, we found a preponderance of rocks in every single parking lot we looked at, and that intensifies the heat effect as well. I mean, you know, it's radiating heat from.
Yeah, it's not gonna exclude it, but, you know, they'll need to put some ground cover in there that'll, you know, creep along the surface and expand, and so at least it'll cover up, you know, some of, some of that effect, is what.
So that was on purpose?
That was, we talked about that quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, and actually, we, that's what we say in certain areas of the current ordinance, is some type of ground cover.
Like rocks.
But we don't say vegetative, so, yeah.
What do you think river rock comes from?
Rivers.
Where are rivers?
Well, they've been basically everywhere.
Nowhere near Moscow.
Excellent river rock, 20 miles from the nearest river.
Yeah, Joel?
Two thoughts. One, you showed, again, you showed us a picture of the evergreen tree that's going to be a site obstruction eventually, is there, and you do encourage the use of evergreen trees. Should there be some language somehow that trees, as a rich maturity, should not be a site obstruction?
I agree. I think that would, I think that'd be a good idea to have that language in, in there just as a clarification, so that there's no question about it.
Sure.
And it's especially true of evergreens, it's, they're gonna have low, low branches.
Yeah, and I did, you know, these are follow-up comments with David about that, and kind of the first bullet point here is what he suggested. I was gonna talk to you, you know, maybe bring forward what he had mentioned, and then talk to you about maybe how you want that incorporated. But what he said was height, you know, and he was just taking a stab at it, we can refine it. But height of mature shrubs found in islands and buffers that are positioned near line of sight intersections and turning radius should not exceed 36 inches. You know, we could try to incorporate trees in with that, in with that as well.
Maybe a second sentence following on, because that's, that's good for shrubs.
Yeah.
So how high would you have to prune up an evergreen to have sight?
Say five feet, maybe?
Well, the standard in our city code for intersections, street intersections, is no more than three feet in height for shrubs. And then you have, it's either eight to 10 feet of pruning for trees of clearance.
On the streets, it's 12.
Yeah, that's just overhanging the street. What I'm talking about, so you have an intersection, you have property that's on that corner. So take, for instance, your property in the corner, you have a 40-foot site triangle that's measured 40 feet back on either street, and then you draw a triangle. Well, any, any, you know, shrubbery or trees within that triangle has to, it can't exceed three feet in height, and any tree has to be pruned to a point that's, I think, it's either eight to 10 feet, but I want to say it's maybe 10 feet.
Because we've gotten, you know, the 12 is along the rest of the street.
Yeah, those are actually trees that are overhanging the street.
It's hard to imagine why it isn't 12 at the corner, too. I was surprised that David, last time, last meeting, didn't make any comment or a specific comparison between a conifer, cone-bearing tree and a deciduous tree. And I thought, I've been under the vague impression that deciduous trees' roots tended to go down a little bit more than, than cone-bearing, because, I mean, we've lost now five or six trees in, just in our immediate neighborhood of those big old firs that are in the meridian, and they just don't have place to grow. In other words, they don't, they're, when you put them in the meridian, there is no place, because if you, I don't see this in an oak tree, when I walk across the green, maples and oaks, I don't see the roots up on the ground, but when you walk under an evergreen, you do. You see the roots often just snaking along the ground. And so it really seems to me that we, I mean, maybe we can just make site recommendations that would minimize the evergreens, but it seems like in any one of these edge conditions that an evergreen doesn't really work very well. I shouldn't say just evergreen, I should say trees. I guess Mugo pines and things like that can oftentimes be held below five feet, or below that three feet, but even they, even them, I, you know, I'm concerned about, I don't think we use that many cone-bearing, but we shouldn't show them as a. I don't think we use that many cone-bearing, but we shouldn't show them as an example, for sure.
Yeah.
Except, we did talk about for when you're away from the site.
When you're away from it.
And you really want a visual barrier that's there in December and February.
We liked that Walmart example, I thought was pretty cool.
It seems like it'd be a good idea to keep the standards the same when the purpose is visual, like it is with the site triangle, and that's the purpose inside the, with the interior landscaping. I mean, it seems like it might make it a little easier to have those standards be the same.
Yeah.
Which, you know, leads you to the three-foot shrub and the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think the exterior, unless it's approaching driveway, you know, a street driveway, I think that's what you're looking for, is, you know, evergreen like Walmarts that has the big evergreens there that are going to have that site obstruction, headlights and things like that.
But it's still working December.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing that I caught from David's discussion was the problem of trees and required lighting. Your draft does not mention that.
Yeah, I thought about that. I didn't have a good solution for language, you know.
Well, how about placement of trees shall be such that upon maturity, they will not interfere with lighting?
It could be just a distance as well. I mean, you'd think at least 20 feet would be a minimum distance that you would want.
I noted that the picture you showed of the evergreen tree was planted about four feet away from a light pole.
And it's.
Something, that light will be hidden in the middle of the tree.
That's particularly, comes to bear in the wintertime, too, because when the deciduous trees lose their leaves in the wintertime, they're probably, there's not as much obstruction, but in the wintertime, the evergreen doesn't change. So, that's.
Yeah, it seems like distance is so tightly related to the type of tree, so it'd be hard, I think, to quantify it that way, but maybe just more.
I agree. I think that rather than stating it in feet, leave it so that.
Qualitative, it has to.
Upon maturity, it will not interfere.
Exactly, that, and leave it up to the landscape architect to figure out what that means in terms of what they're choosing.
Okay.
What happens to us on Main Street, then? I'll think about that a little bit. Don't we have trees and the lights? Could we?
Lightest trees.
They're deciduous.
Well, they are deciduous, absolutely. And so, that makes it in the.
And the will not interfere allows for the intricacies of deciduous trees.
On our walking street, the locusts are quite light, but we've noticed down in Lewiston, they chose a kind of a tree that's really dense. If you notice how dark it is under those trees, and I don't know if they have that light situation or not on their.
On Main Street?
I've never thought about safety on Main Street at night, but.
I thought David mentioned last time that they lowered them, lowered the lights because of that reason, but.
Down in Lewiston?
Here, to Main Street, here.
Well, and the trees now year-round have decorative lighting in them, too, don't they? So, it provides some additional lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, would that meet the lighting standard, just to fill every tree?
Christmas light.
Christmas lights all year, festive town.
If they were LEDs.
Yeah. I hear they're tacky if you leave them up there anywhere.
And so, these are just, the following bullet points were regarding the shrub. So, we have the two-foot tall shrub requirement right now, and a lot of the other jurisdictions go to a gallon size. These are David's opinion, you know, I guess professional opinion on the different gallon sizes. One, two, three, and five is what they typically come in. It's increased in cost as you go up in size. He says that the one-gallon size root ball is rather small and could dry out, die during establishment if there's not irrigation. Disadvantage of the five-gallon size is the high cost, and so you typically see a two-to-three gallon compromise. Survivability is good and appearance of the plant's good. And he looked at Boise's landscape code just to get a feel for it, and they use the two-gallon as the minimum standard for woody shrubs. And so, that's what he recommends going with in our standards would be two gallons, I guess for evergreen, but he does say, I guess, perennials, one gallon would be fine with those, and so maybe those are a little less sensitive than the evergreens.
Do you know if they're sold in the two-gallon size, too?
The perennials?
Yeah.
I would imagine they are.
I was just kind of wondering if it might be easier to kind of, rather than throwing in that complication of, yeah, one gallon if you're doing woody perennials or two gallons if you're doing evergreens, just say two gallon.
Yeah. So, we could, you know, instead of the two-foot in height, we could, I could specify two gallons in the ordinance for the shrub size.
Sounds good.
And is it worth putting in the waffle language of two gallon or equivalent? Or is that just confused things? Because, I don't know, you know, I guess all I was thinking of is what if they decide we're going to sell them now in three-foot high? But that's probably thinking too much, so I'll pretend I didn't say that.
Yeah. Okay, well, I will go back and make those changes and then bring it back next meeting. We'll take a look at it.
Good.
Okay. Anybody have any additional comments? So, we'll move on to the portable?
Yeah, we want to, maybe, I think Rob and Brenda were here, so maybe we could just take, you know, talk about the minor PUD amendment, so they don't have to sit through the other two items.
So, we'll move to item nine and the minor PUD amendment discussion. Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we've got a letter in your packet from Brenda Horn-Wandruska. Want to come up? That talks about some issues with our current criteria for minor PUD amendments. And so, you know, when we went through recently our approval criteria, it was mainly just for PUDs going forward. This is, this pertains to PUDs that are already in existence, and they want to make some type of change to the plan. And the way we have it laid out, we have two types of amendments. We've got minor amendments, and we've got major amendments. The minor amendments are pretty simple. We've done a few of them here over the last couple of years at the commission level. It just gets reviewed at the commission level, so it does, there's no public hearing, there's no notice. It really just gets scheduled for a commission meeting and they'll present a proposal, and if it meets all of the minor PUD amendment criteria, and the commission feels that it satisfies all of those, then they're typically approved. And I think that all the ones have been, you know, slightly, they've had to do with maybe a little bit of alteration in building style or a different type of, you know, building type within certain PUDs. And so, those are the ones we've primarily seen recently.
Wasn't there one where they wanted to shift the house over a little bit?
Yeah, we had, like, Camden Court, yeah, a little bit closer. Tempo, we've had a couple there. They had kind of the L-shaped configuration, single level, that was an amendment. We had a setback reduction in greensides, you know, those types of things. They're usually pretty minor and usually only affect maybe one lot within the PUD. But they, you know, just looking through the criteria, we've got quite a few criteria, there's like 11 of them. And, you know, and this is always, we haven't really ran up against it until recently, working with Brenda on the Silos project. And if you look at the first criteria, and that's probably the most problematic, is it states that, you know, it is a minor PUD amendment.
No, it's three. Three.
Well, you've got number one, too, with the 1%. Increased dwelling unit count, so that would be the issue, right? So, we have increased proposed enclosed square footage or any category of primary use more than 5%, and does not increase the dwelling unit count of the approved PUD plan by more than 1% of the final PUD-approved plan. So, that's saying that you have to have 100 units before you can even have one, which is, we don't have any PUDs right now that even come close to the 100 unit count. So, you know, the threshold there is just so great that it's going to be hard to allow any type of deviation. And, you know, I guess in Brenda's circumstance, that the majority, the reason, I think they had originally gone through the PUD, and she could speak to this, is to incorporate some commercial uses that weren't normally allowed within the R4 zone. So, you know, what they're planning on doing is starting to phase some of those out and go towards replacing those with residential uses, which would be allowed in the underlying zone. So, I guess it's a little bit different in our minds to say that, well, you're replacing what you're allowed to do anyway underneath the current zone, you're not going back and saying that, well, I'm going to put, you know, adding 5% of commercial space, you're just going back and saying that, well, I want to convert this to what's already allowed underneath the R4 zone. So, you know, the reason this comes up, if they were just going to say that, well, we're just going to convert the whole thing to residential, they would pretty much just vacate the PUD because there'd be no reason for it anymore. They could just do, you know, there were no other deviations other than allowing some commercial in the project. And so, once they transition to completely residential, then there's no reason to have a PUD, and they're not bound by that because they meet all the current requirements of the multifamily zone that they're in. And so, you know, the issue they're running up to with this is that they're not completely, they're planning on ultimately transitioning, I think, all of the commercial office uses out, but they have, that's not going to be for another three to four years. And so, you know, they're requesting us to take a look at this, but it also brings up just a, you know, more general topic about whether or not we, you know, for maybe other projects in the future, we need a different, higher threshold, or I guess a lower threshold for expansion of maybe uses that are allowed underneath the underlying zone. So, maybe it's, you know, doesn't increase it by more than a certain percentage for uses that aren't allowed in the underlying zone. And so, I think that there's kind of a clear distinction, at least in my mind, as to the uses that are allowed underneath the zone and the uses that are, that you've incorporated through the PUD. So, but, you know, looking through the rest of these, you know, number two, alter the ratio and number of dwelling units of different housing types by more than 5%. So, that'd be like, you know, maybe you have a bunch of single-family dwellings and you want to incorporate a couple of duplexes within that, those are housing types. And so, you know, 5% is pretty high threshold as well, so maybe we look at, you know, providing a little bit more flexibility. And the rest of them, you know, floor area of a use not permitted in the underlying zone by more than 1%, that's kind of redundant with the first criteria. And then the rest of them, you know, a lot of them have to do with kind of the visual impact, clustering, not changing or substantially changing kind of pedestrian paths, streets, trails through the process, changing the environmental impact, the phasing, or, you know, if they went through a bonus density, which they didn't for this project, you know, reducing or eliminating some of those factors that allowed the bonuses to be awarded when they originally went through.
You say you didn't in this case?
They didn't, no, they didn't have to go through any bonus density. And then negate justification around the, so looking at the original relevant criteria and standards, if it changes that, then it wouldn't meet the minor. So, you know, looking at the major, so if it doesn't meet that, what do you have to do? Well, instead of one meeting before Planning and Zoning Commission to review it, and then maybe a follow-up meeting if it's, you know, there's a change that needs to be made, well, you're pretty much starting from scratch and going completely back through the original process. So, you've got a neighborhood meeting, and it's like, it never happened. You're pretty much from square one. And so, you've got this really high threshold with the minor PUD amendment, and then if it, you know, if it doesn't meet those criteria, then you're stuck doing, you know, three, four months of doing this process. So, I think it's worthy of taking a look at, and, you know, especially for those uses that are allowed already.
Back to the first, your prior slide, the first one, one of the things that is catching my attention is the dwelling unit count, which mean me not, when the PUD was approved, were there a number of units that were approved that were either above or below what was actually ended up being developed, or?
No, they're required to develop per the approved plans, so.
But that says that there was a dwelling unit count that was approved, which to me means a number of dwelling units that could be, that were approved. Is that, is that not the case?
It could be the case, but in, do you mind?
Sure.
It could be the case that what, when you submit the plan, you say what each use is going to be.
For each unit?
So, on your plan, you say this is a residential and this is this and that's that, and that's if you want to change it.
Okay.
It's got nothing to do with how many in this case. You just want to, instead of having, and we have changed it, by the way, under, when Andrew was here, Andrew didn't.
Yeah, they went through a couple minor amendments.
We had the coffee house, and then we changed it to an office, and at that time, you know, Andrew said, Andrew and Bill both said, oh, no, go ahead, that's no worries. But Mike's, Mike knows his code. No, I mean.
Yeah, Mike.
It's a compliment because it's really nice working with someone who actually reads it and says, this is the reason, instead of, yeah, so.
Now, we need to ask Bill instead of Mike.
I think Bill remembers that.
He said, yeah, and we shouldn't have done that, but now we need to do it the way it should be done. So, it's a compliment to Mike to say he knows what's in here.
Is there?
It is.
Do you see a problem here as being, you know, I want to look at those numbers and I think, yeah, those are, whoever thought that we'd have so many units that you could qualify as a minor amendment?
It sounds like a PUD code that was lifted from someplace else where they do have PUDs.
Sounds like New York City where you've got 500 units in the smallest place. I mean, 1%, give me a break. I don't even know why we're saying that.
I think the way I read it is they were thinking about somebody that wanted to increase the density, you know, in a planned unit development, which is, you know, in this case, it's not, that's not really what's happening. I mean, the language that we need to try to capture is, I think, is if you move it, if you move the PUD closer to the underlying right of the zoning area, yeah, I would think that should count as a minor amendment.
Yeah.
But how you capture that, how you get that language in there.
Well, you could simply say something.
Oh, you go up to Mike, he's really good at codes, I hear.
Unless you could put language in that says unless you're going to comply with the underlying code.
Yeah, we already have, so like number three, right? So, increased floor area of a use not permitted in the underlying zoning district by more than 1%. So, we could try to incorporate, I think that's probably the clear distinction of, you know, I think that those numbers need to be increased all around the percentages, but I think that that's probably the easiest thing to say is maybe it doesn't apply to uses that are permitted in the underlying zone.
Those numbers, to me, I don't recall reading them before. Those numbers, to me, I don't recall reading them before, but they, what they say is, there will be no changes. I mean, you know, it's almost ridiculous in our world at least, so I think it's worth them. And I don't understand them. Of course, the silos were an unusually placed unit that, I suppose all of us thought it would never work. I don't know why Brenda tried.
And it doesn't work.
But she has different view now, and we, but it's out in a place that's essentially residential, and you would think, I'm just not sure how this even, you know, even relates to it. I mean, she was trying to do magic and bring a little business into, which we've all thought about over the years, of how could in a residential district could we get something? And it didn't really work, so I'm having a hard time seeing what the issue is. It should just, probably residential's a big deal there. Even if you could have some offices, I always thought that was great.
Well, the only thing that I keep coming back to is dwelling, what happens if you strike dwelling unit? Does not increase the unit count of the approved plan, and then number three says that it has to be within the permitted use. So then you're not increasing the size of the planned unit development. You've got a certain number and that gives you the flexibility to move back and forth through the uses that the thing was planned for in the first place.
Or does not increase the allowable unit count by the underlying zone, according to something like that?
Because it could make, it could make a big difference if you've already had exceeded your density and got allowances for density. So it's really important in some cases. But what we want to do is change the use rather than the density. We don't increase, so it does have value in some projects.
Yeah. Can you flip to the next slide there, as we look at the other ones again?
Yeah, that's not a bad answer. Count units instead of dwelling units.
Is there, is there a need for those first three, given, there's 11 criteria up there you have to meet every single one? Do the other, do the other eight, if you take out those first three, still capture the gist of what you're trying to protect with the original PUD plan without having to do math and get out measuring tapes and all that?
Seems like you still need something about the.
Four is still a problem for silos.
None of them are problems.
Yeah, to me, it seems like number one through four are so similar. You know, they're, they're just, you get confused when you go back and forth because you read one and you think you understand it, and then you go to the next one and almost contradicts the other ones. So I think that, you know, maybe it's taking a look at those first four and trying to figure out what it is where we're trying to save people from here.
I think it's just the percentages. Because I looked at it pretty carefully to see in my head, putting in different examples and what would happen. And you have approved different plans, even very small PUDs, where you, where you've allowed density increases or, you know, not enough. There are lots of examples of where there's no fire trap turnaround or there's, because what the other thing I was going to say to you, you should also make sure to add some language about parking. Because imagine we change the use, we're allowed to change the use, well, you do need different kinds of parking for different kinds of uses. So you, if you want to be careful, you would, you'd say, that's fine, change the percentage, but also put the caveat that you've got to meet the existing underlying zoning code requirements for parking and open space and landscaping and everything else as well, because otherwise you, you can skew it and.
Yeah, maybe that'd be a good one to add, like we have in other criteria that say it needs to meet the development standard, you know, of the zoning code type thing. So maybe that's one that we could add that would be good.
Which is in the, that first paragraph of what a PUD you have to comply with underlying code, if you just put that language back in, because.
What do you think you want from us at this point with this regard? What do we want to, how can we help?
Well, I can, I was just looking, making sure the commission was all right with having us take a look at maybe rework at some of these.
So we could, I'm sorry, give you instructions, please.
Okay, yeah, well, I can, I'll bring it back at a future meeting after we've had a chance to look through it and.
Does that impede what you need to do on an immediate basis?
It depends how long you take it.
We move faster on here.
What we want to do is, we want to convert an office space, two office spaces into two residential spaces. So, I mean, you could, you could even say, but if you want to, if you want to revert back to the underlying, what's allowed in the underlying code and you meet all the requirements of the underlying code, then you can do a minor PUD, and that would be a different sentence before you really carefully look.
I still think we need that one in there, you know, even if we.
Yeah. Because when I was looking at it and writing that letter, I thought, there's a whole lot of other little details in the code and different little parts that you want to make sure you, you look at before you just.
And meet the stand, not only revert to them, but meet the standards of the underlying code.
Especially since Mike reads them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So is that maybe the way to go, that any, any amendments to the PUD that meet all of the underlying zoning code requirements are considered a minor amendment? I mean, will that screw anything up? Are there any loopholes there?
As long as they haven't gotten a density bonus or some other, you know, there's some of those.
But you put that language in, you say, you may only do this if you, if, like, for example, we got one concession. We got the retail, which was the, in effect, the coffee house. Well, I was too lazy to do that, so it didn't work. And now, like, then we turned it into an office. And now we don't want the office. Because people come in with their bicycles and we don't like bicycles. I'm being facetious. So, but we want to go back to what's allowed, apartments are allowed. So if you just go back to what you would have been able to do without getting anybody's permission.
Yeah, so in the case of somebody had a density bonus and you wanted to convert retail into another unit, you couldn't do it because you'd be over the underlying code.
Yeah, right. Got you.
I kind of like your suggestion that it could actually come prior to the heading above number one there.
Because in, in reality, we made a whole bunch of changes without realizing that we, that we should have asked first.
And Mike got you.
And then Mike comes along and I just get on the phone and say, well, Mike, by the way, we're just going to do blah, blah, blah. And Mike says, well, that's fine, but, you know, this, that and the other.
Well, and if changes that happened across the city in various places have no, the public isn't interested in it or doesn't, it in no way impacts us, and yet we've got a rule about it, that is edging toward micromanaging that I don't think we really want to do. You know, if.
But you were just talking about two gallon shrubs. You were just talking about two gallon shrubs.
Well, don't worry, I did, it came to my mind. It's an interesting, it's an interesting issue, and I think we have, it's, we even had the question, Dennis brought it up the other, was just asking, well, what do we want to do with landscaping? I mean, what's the big thing we want to do? Not, is it this size or this size? You know, I mean, the tree, I mean, that gets to be so nitty. And yet, what we like to do is to be environmentally sane and make our place beautiful and have water, use water in appropriate ways. And yet, we find ourselves talking about calipers and gallons.
Except that you'd get the developer who had put a half-inch caliper tree there and you'd be waiting past your lifetime and probably mine to get to it.
No, no, I agree with that. I mean, there has to be some thought about it.
There has to be something, yeah.
Absolutely. I know it well, because I know when I planted trees here about 15, 16 years ago, I thought, I want to enjoy this tree in my lifetime. So I'm willing to pay $250 for a tree that was big enough, so, and now I am enjoying it. But you can't have every, every business in town spend $200 on a tree.
Should we try to put a timeframe on this so that we're conscious?
What do you think is doable, Mike, from your schedule?
Well, we can discuss it. I mean, we should have ample time because we're not going to meet until the end of June.
So would you come back to us at the June 20, whatever it is?
Yeah, we could discuss it and then have kind of a proposal that we think addresses it.
Does that have to go to council?
It would, yeah.
Yeah, it would. Yeah, if we're going to change, change it, we, there's already set criteria.
Yeah, we only have 15-day notices on the legislative amendments, so, you know, we could get it done in a couple of months.
Is that out of period time?
We have at least till the end of October.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We'd like to be able to know what the plan is, but.
Right, right. But no, you raised very interesting points, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Okay, so we'll move back to item seven, which is the portable sign draft ordinance.
I certainly hope you're going to show us a video tonight. I'll watch some flapping thing.
I think we should watch an episode of Game of Thrones.
Well, we had, I think, previously discussed this at, I think, just one meeting, I think the last meeting. But Brandon Mitchell, the owner of Jiffy Lube and the Dragonfly Car Wash, had submitted a letter to us asking us to take a look at allowing feather banner signs, is I think what he referred to them as. And so we've kind of done a little bit of background research on them. They come in a variety of sizes, shapes and heights. Just a, you know, quick search on the internet would bring up all these examples. There was a few around town that we had recently gotten a complaint on and gone through. And we had an ordinance back in 2009 which allowed portable signs, which were really defined as sandwich board signs, so a three-foot wide by four-foot tall sign. They used to be only allowed in the downtown central business district, but, you know, multiple businesses were displaying them out there on the various highway corridors. And so at that time, we'd come up with some additional regulations to include those types of portable signs or allow businesses that are along kind of the highway corridors, motor business and general business zones, in order to have some type of portable sign options. And so, these are relatively new occurrence, I think, that, you know, just started showing up maybe, you know, probably most five years ago, you know, three, four years. But these were, you know, ones that we had gone around after we received a complaint because we have to treat everybody equally. And I told them that they, you know, their option under the code, I guess right now, is A-frame sign. And I don't know if I, Wendy pointed out, that may not have been clear about, there is an option right now for temporary signs, and these would, you know, I guess qualify under our code for temporary signs, that you get a temporary sign permit and display something like this for two periods of 15 days. So you would essentially get a month to display, you know, these types of signs, and then you wouldn't be able to display it the rest of the year right now under our current regulations. And so what he was asking was to take a look at, you know, allowing these, the commission had reviewed them last meeting. These were kind of examples of what he was putting up at his various businesses. And then we had gone around and taken a look at a lot of, you know, these other jurisdictions that we typically look at. Some of them, you know, maybe Sandpoint and one other jurisdiction just outright banned them, they didn't allow them. The rest of them just kind of varied, they usually called them banner signs. And they really, it was kind of a wide variety. Some were like Boise, I think only allows them on a temporary basis, like we currently would allow them in the code for two, two-week periods. But most of the other jurisdictions really just allowed them year-round. Some places like Lewiston didn't have any regulations at all on them, that you actually could have 10 of them in front of your lot if you wanted to. But most of them, you know, had some type of size and height limitation and number that you were allowed, as well as how long you could put it up and take it down. So at the time, I think that the commission was, we had looked at the portable sign, the current language which allowed those A-frame signs within our code within downtown. I think it was the commission's direction that we didn't want to see those come up in downtown. We just wanted to maybe look at allowing them in general business and motor business. And I think the last direction I got was to take a look at how that could be incorporated as a portable sign in the code. So it was, you know, fairly simple, but what we would do for general business and motor business, we would keep the standards the same, so you'd get to choose if you were, you know, if you wanted an A-frame type sign, you could have one of those at the rate that we currently allow them. But if you wanted something on the highway corridor and you wanted something a little bit larger for one of these freestanding banner signs, you could choose, but you wouldn't be able to have, you know, both of them unless you had enough frontage. So right now, within general business, motor business, we just allow one sign every 100 feet a lot of frontage. And then you have one per frontage, so if you want a corner lot, you'd at least be entitled to two of them because you'd have two frontages. But you can in no way have more than three portable signs for any single lot. And then we go through kind of the maximum size. What we'd be doing is just keeping sandwich board signs the same at the three-foot wide by four feet high, and then including what the regulations would be for freestanding banner signs. And I had just put 13.
So you just threw those numbers in?
I just put those numbers in there.
Because I was thinking square footage, it's 12 square feet on the sandwich board, you know, should we be thinking something not so tall?
Yeah, and that's, you know, it, I guess that, you know, Brandon's argument was that when you get downtown, you have sandwich boards, a lot more pedestrian oriented than when you're on the highway, and he thinks that you need something a little bit bigger to, you know, capture somebody driving by at 35 miles an hour type of thing. So, yeah, those were just, probably average numbers that I had come up with just looking at these other jurisdictions. You know, that wasn't the minimum, that wasn't the maximum, that was just kind of in between what some of the other ones allowed. And then we'd say the same things, you know, has to be durable, has to be anchored to the ground in some fashion, can't present a site obstruction at an intersection, has to be at the, removed at the end of each business day and not displayed during non-business hours. And so then we have an exemption, so if you have like a strip mall and you, there's, you can't see these signs from any of the street, then they're allowed to be displayed. So maybe East Side Marketplace, if the cinemas is displaying them where you enter the main mall entrance, those aren't regulated by the code. It's just the ones that are out there adjacent to the street that would be regulated. And then I guess it's, you know, this is something that was, we've seen in some of the other jurisdictions, and Brandon actually promoted having this statement in there about making sure they're not tattered, torn or in a state of disrepair, which would, you know, present a site nuisance to the rest of the community for, you know, displaying that. So, so that's what I did.
Well, I wonder if it'd be worth calling around to a couple of the people that make these and see if there's a standard size.
Well, they're, yeah, they're all over the board, so, yeah.
Are they?
So if you go.
You just get whatever, just tell them how big you want it.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's the, so I took an average. I mean, you got ones like the giant one, it looks like it's mounted to a tire and a couple guy. the giant one, it looks like it's mounted to a tire and a couple guy wires off there. But, yeah, the majority of the ones that you see are, you know, that's probably average, 13 feet, but they go all the way up to the, you know, 17 feet and all that. And I would say that that would probably include the pole part of it, too.
Right, I was wondering about that, too. It's not just the flag, it's the height of both, the total height, yeah.
Mike, as I was wandering through town today, after having read this, I noticed a variety of other, what I would think of as portable signs about the size of A-frames, but they're actually in a metal frame that's stuck down into the ground. And I saw one that was in front of a business. Under their other larger sign, I saw a number of property for lease or for rent out in front of places, and I started wondering, well, are those considered portable signs? Is there a real estate exemption for these portable signs that come in and out as property? I mean, we all see the real estate signs when a property is for sale, but all of a sudden, I started thinking, well, are these all considered portable signs? We talk about A-frames and flags, but there's just a whole bunch of other kinds of signs out there as well, I didn't know if...
Yeah, we exempt a lot of the for lease or for sale signs. So, you know, I think that, after Brandon mentioned that some of the other communities he sees these types of feather signs in, like leasing, you know, going to an apartment complex, you'll see maybe a couple of them right in front of the leasing office. Well, if they meet the, you know, I think that when we looked over the code, I think those would be covered underneath our current leasing, you know, exemption. But there is a square footage, I think it's maybe 16 square feet for the maximum size for those, but, yeah, they wouldn't have to get a permit or anything like that.
But if it was a regular business, not one of...
If it was a regular business, yeah, they should have either gotten a temporary sign for it, a temporary sign permit, or if they met the, you know, current portable, if it was, you know, it doesn't always have to be exactly, you know, it doesn't have to exactly look like, you know, a sandwich board sign. If it met the three-by-four, then we'd probably right now just say that's a portable sign, as long as they got a permit for it, they'd be able to put it up.
Are there comments?
Political signs are exempt.
Yeah, yeah.
I kind of see these as temporary. So, is it too onerous to treat them as temporary, do you think? Do you think it is too onerous?
Yeah, because if you can only put it up for a month, I mean, if you're advertising Jiffy Lube, you don't want to just have it up for a month.
Yeah, it needs to be up continually, yeah.
I think you just don't treat it any different from the sandwich board out on the way from town. I think it fits fine, I think it fits perfectly myself, but that's just...
I wonder if it might be worth changing that terminology of a sandwich board sign, because that's, you know, that makes everybody think specifically of the A-frame sandwich board. I think you're using A-frame the same.
Yeah, we, in the definition of portable sign, we go through kind of a bunch of examples, you know, it said A-frame sandwich board, I think we call out maybe balloons with logo on them type of thing. So there's kind of a wide variety of portable signs, but within that, it's almost like we define a wide variety, but then we specifically, you know, call out, like, well, I guess this, it would just be portable signs is what we had before, and now we'd specifically be calling out sandwich boards for the four-by-three, and then freestanding banner signs, which I think a lot of signs that you see would qualify as one of those freestanding banners. So like, you know, for instance, A&amp;W right now, up there at Sunset Mart, has a banner, but they just have two stakes on either side that they'll put up, and it probably meets those requirements of 24 square feet. So, you know, that would give, you know, maybe, instead of just either having them come in to get a temporary one, permit, every time they put something like that up, you know, they could have the option of getting one of them, you know, using that as their freestanding banner sign instead of a feather-looking sign, so...
Would it even be just drop the banner and say freestanding signs?
Well, we have to draw a distinction between the permanent ones, that's what we call the permanent ones on the pole, that are, you know, in a foundation in the ground, that's what we call those types of signs. So we'd have to draw a distinction, you know, I think that, we have to draw a distinction between the permanent ones and the, I guess, the banners that are up on walls. So you could put a banner, you know, one of those vinyl banners up on a wall of a building, and it's really just declared a wall sign. You know, they could display it year-round, permanent wall sign. But these are unique in that they're of that material, but they're supported by some type of temporary freestanding base, so that's why we came up with the freestanding banner.
So here I am wandering around again with a solution, looking for a problem.
I had a question, I ran into some contradictions, and maybe I'm just not reading this right, but about their placement and what's allowed and disallowed. Like, in what you handed out, or it came in our packet, maximum number permitted shall be one portable sign per each 100 feet of building frontage. At least one portable sign shall be permitted for each building. So, what does that mean? So you have a strip shopping center, and only one sign, I mean, the way I understood it, when we talked about it before...
You probably read in the central business.
No, oh, maybe that, no, it's all of them, it's all the zones you have, you have...
So there's two, yeah.
An urban mixed commercial, and, oh, maybe that's, okay, maybe...
So, yeah, we were deciding to leave it.
That's what's wrong, okay, yeah, because it was also talking about not allow, you know, allowing in the right of way and then not allowing in the port of right, the public side of way.
Yeah, and that's mainly downtown. So we've got central business, and then we did Legacy Crossing District, Urban Mixed Commercial, we added that one to the central business, so...
Dennis, do you see, you see them in motor business? So in a place where we mostly, where we like to mostly walk, that's a different thing than the place where we mostly drive. And it is hard, I must admit, that we've now got great big things that flash all manner of computer stuff.
Yeah.
The dynamics of it.
If you do think about it generically, there's, I don't know, 5,000, 10,000 cars an hour, I don't know how many an hour, I mean, the clutter of just cars, four lanes of cars is shocking. So it's hard to imagine, I suppose, that we're messing up the environment much more by having so much fluttering things, I suppose, than...
Well, I always find that, that, I mean, my reservation lies in businesses do that, one business will do this, then three more, then five more, then there's so much visual chaos, that then they try something even bigger, and it's just compounds, yeah.
We've had other sign phases that have come and gone, and I keep mentioning that one, that square one that came on little wheels and a little frame, and you could change the letters on it, it was lit on each side. And I think there's only one in town now that I know about, and in fact, I think it's Denny's Auto out on the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, I know which one you mean.
Not that they need it, but they bought it, you know, probably 30 years ago, and it's still sitting there, rusty. But I suspect it just seems, I want, I feel like straining it and that, but I don't, I think it is straining it and that, when you think of the, you know, the, what it is on Division or Sprague or Miracle Mile, it's already a mess, and it's hard to imagine that you're going to make it better by restricting. So I'm, I don't know, I've kind of come to the view that let's just put up a little guideline, and I was hoping maybe that people would like to have them up intermittently. So I was imagining every quarter you could, because in my simple mind, and I don't run a business as you do, that's why I ask you, because you depend on somebody coming into your business, but it seems to me like it makes sense when you have special occasions to put up some signs and catch people's attention, and do the, have something special. If they're going to be up year-round, 365 days a year, after all, we're just going to see a bunch of fluttering things in front of every business, and I think we're gonna, at least, I think Joel just said he's able to drive down the highway and zone that stuff out. Just look at your speedometer.
Well, I think in a small town, after a while, you do that, once you become familiar with it, I mean, you know, when you're going up Division Street, you're looking at everything, trying to figure out where you have to actually turn in on that three miles of chaos, or five miles of chaos.
But some people who live in the valley, who consider that their main street in Sprague at least, or Division, they have that same issue there, it's just a...
It's overload, sensory overload.
But you also have a number of transient people that are either coming in for occasions with the university, or, and they're not used to tuning those out, they are potentially looking for...
Well, I agree with that, but that's why it seems to me like it would be, if you had, you could do it so many times a year. I mean, for homecoming or mom's weekend, you'd probably like to put up a bunch of stuff.
Beginning of the semester, when the students are...
But, for businesses as a, there's probably an event almost every week for, between the two universities, and so it's almost continual in a way, and I don't know how you, I mean, I understand the dilemma, I don't know what the right answer is for that either, but I, you know, you see it from the business standpoint, but you see it from the clutter standpoint as well.
Well, these, I mean, these are way more benign than the LED signs.
Depends on whether you're driving through tri-cities or along the, through, along the Columbia Basin with a 40 mile an hour wind, because hey, look...
They don't last very long, either.
And I just happened to be doing that right before we talked about it last time, and they were just flying all over the place. So I was like, what are we doing?
Yeah, I was on 50 miles to make sure I never drive through tri-state.
Go, if I can go through Waitsburg, I, you know, it's worth it to me.
You know those little things that blow up and go flopping around?
Let's not allow those.
Well, that, let's exclude those up here.
That would be a temporary.
There is one right now at the Moscow, at the East Side Mall, there's one of those little...
That they go zzzzz.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't know whether I feel, sometimes I think the stuff we do is quite important about how we organize our streets and our subdivisions, and I wish, in some ways, I just hate to have this at our table.
Well, like you said, it's a rock and a hard place. It's new technology that's come around now, we've got a new sign, we have to deal with it, and I think the best way is to either replace it with a sandwich board, you know, not have both, have a taller one instead of the shorter, fatter one. It's a little bit more square feet, I guess, but...
Well, I was wondering if we could match the square footage, or at least get a little closer, but maybe 13, and Mike showed us that that's...
Well, I was thinking of, so we allow them 13 feet in height, that usually includes the pole, so you've got maybe an 11 foot, and then you're thinking, you know, maybe two feet wide type of thing, and you get, you get somewhere, yeah, I think, I think what Brandon said was they're about, yeah, I think he said they're about a foot and a half.
Yeah, okay.
And make them that small, I mean, it's something to think about, you don't want a big, a tall one out there like he's got, I mean, we don't have to, you know, they, the graph shows shorter ones, so...
I was glad to see, too, that you put no lighting to make sure they're not going to get lit, or they're not going to digitize, the thing themselves aren't going to become digitized, because I think that'll happen, too, if we're on that street.
Yeah, then we get the feathers again.
One more iteration of mobile digital.
Well, they seem like, they don't seem like a new technol, I mean, they've been around for years.
Well, that's not new, but it's coming into this town, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, there are terrific samurai movies where everybody has those on their back, because they're riding in the back.
Well, I'm kind of with Nell's, I wish we had bigger issues on front of the table. I mean, it's, because it does sort of add to the general overall visual clutter and competition that happens along strip developments, that, you know, it's a not, sort of never-ending cycle of visual chaos.
It seems that when, you know, the war is really, the horse is out of the barn when we invented cars, I mean, after the Second World War, so now we keep just fussing with these little things that I'm not sure is significant, because...
Well, it is, if we weren't here, there'd be signs everywhere, so, well, people are doing good. I mean, we have to do it, take the good with the bad, I guess.
Well, another really good limiting factor is the way that you have to take it down when you close.
Yeah.
And that means it's got to be, you know, you've got to be able to handle it relatively, so that keeps it...
And if it's tattered, then maybe eventually they won't put it back out, because it's right there.
What's the word, if it's not temporary, it's what kind of a sign is it?
Portable.
Portable.
So since it's not permanent, so where are we with this?
I think that the draft that we've been presented with today is probably a reasonable response.
It's middle ground, yeah, as far as height and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think you did about as good a job with it as you can be, it's not something that really revs my engine, I have to say.
But the 100 feet of footage...
And I will continue to ignore them all.
That doesn't go on the, doesn't count the side, too, right? If you are on a corner, you said something about a building being on a corner.
Can have it on both, both...
Yeah, 100 feet of frontage, at least one portable sign should be allowed, each lot street frontage.
So if it's a corner lot.
So if you are a corner lot, you're allowed at least, so if you have, you know, your 50 by 50 squares, your lot, just because you have two frontages, you're allowed at least one per frontage, so...
If you're a mall that runs through the block, if you have one on here and one over there.
Yeah, if you're like, for instance, yeah, probably East Side Marketplace, I mean, that's probably in excess of 300 feet for their frontage on Troy Highway, so they get three signs, you know, whoever displays them gets three signs, but we limit them to no more than three per single lot frontage, so that's how we regulate the excessively long lots on highway, like tri-state maybe.
Okay, so, do we, we need to get a motion to...
Cue that up for public hearing?
Are we ready to do that, you think?
I think it's real...
Okay, okay, so do I hear a motion? Okay, are you making a motion?
We can't have both of them out there, right? Like the flags and the signs.
Cue it up for public hearing.
Is there a second, second, okay, all in favor?
Yeah, yeah, the way it's currently written, it'd be one or the other.
Abstentions, so maybe we'll get a whole bunch of people who are anti-feathers to show up at the public hearing. Okay, so those of you out there listening, if you don't like feathers, then you need to get...
Get out here.
So we have one, non-conformities discussion?
Yeah, just one more quick item, we had, didn't get a chance to get to it last time, and I think we just barely brought it up as a teaser, but, you know, right now, we have a non-conformity section in our zoning code which covers a lot of different things, it's, we have non-conforming lots of record on there, so if you recall, you know, about 2014, that was the circumstance where we had a number of lots that were off of alleys or street, you know, alleys that were named streets, like Hidden Lane, and, which pretty much limited those developments, you know, under our current code, so if it, you know, you had a house that burnt down, per this section of our code, it said that you couldn't rebuild for the most part, so that was an issue, we, so we updated that section of the non-conformities. Non-conforming use of land, we don't really get into that very often, that would be more of along the lines of, you know, use of land that doesn't have any structures associated with it, so maybe you're a pig farmer in the city limits, and, you know, and that's not allowed anymore, but you're technically, you know, we don't use it grandfathered in type of thing, that's what... use it grandfathered in type of thing. That's what, where that would cover. A lot of those issues that we may have ran into at one point in time with agriculture, we had the urban ag ordinance, which really allows, you know, farming within city limits in all, in most residential areas, so we don't have a whole lot of non-conforming uses of, I don't think we have any right now, non-conforming uses of land, so we don't really run into that. What we do run into a lot is non-conforming structures, as well as non-conforming uses of structures, or structures and premises in combination, so. Non-conforming structures, maybe it doesn't meet setback requirements, but at the time it was built, it obviously did. We've just updated the code since then and changed those things, and now it doesn't meet setback requirements, so. That discusses what you can, can't do with those types of structures, depending upon the non-conformity. And then, non-conforming uses of structures, or structures or premises in combination, that would be more along the lines of, you have a duplex within a single-family zone type of thing.
And that's under which the non...
The non-conforming uses of structures.
Because they're all over the place.
Yeah, they are. And it's really been an issue, you know, it used to not be an issue, but ever since the housing crisis in 2008 and all the banks now, that's their first question, is well, can it be rebuilt? We used to never get any calls on that, you know, it would just be that, well, we're gonna land on a duplex, and we don't even check the zone that it's in to see if it could be rebuilt, but ever since that, that happened, that's been a real issue for people, because then they can't get a mortgage, or they can't refinance, or they can't sell the house, because...
Or if it burns down, they can't...
Yeah, the person that wants to purchase it can't get a mortgage on it, so what ends up happening is it sells for less because somebody has to come in and pay cash for it type of thing, so, you know, it really is kind of an equity thing, because the city at one point allowed that to be built, and then at some point came in and downzoned the area, and so now all of a sudden they're out of compliance. So, you know, I think that our, I don't think our non-conforming section has changed a whole lot since it was probably incorporated in maybe the sixties or seventies, so it's pretty archaic. And so, you know, obviously, when you read through the intent of when it was first established, is to, you know, obviously acknowledging that there's these non-conformities out there that were lawful when they were first established, but, you know, and so they'd be regulated restricted underneath the current zoning code. And then it goes on to say that the intent of the codes to permit these non-conformities to continue until they're removed, destroyed, or lost by time, but not to encourage their survival, and so that really just echoes through the rest of the regulations. The way they're written is that, you know, they really limit what you can do, because the intent is that they are lost in time, which, you know, nowadays is, I wouldn't think it's realistic. Furthest the intent of the zoning code, the non-conformity should not be enlarged, expanded, or extended, nor be used as grounds for adding other structures, or use prohibited elsewhere in the same zone. So looking at the non-conforming use section, you know, just adds restrictions on the area that can be enlarged, so you have an area of land that's occupied, so they wouldn't be able to buy, you know, maybe a parcel next door and expand the operation, but like I mentioned before, we never really run into these non-conforming use issues. And we have, you know, ceases for any reason for thirty days, then it has to pretty much stop and go into conformance with what's allowed in the current zone. You can't build any structures, not conforming to the requirements. Look at our non-conforming structures section. So, you know, this provides a little bit of flexibility. It says that it's maybe enlarged or altered in any manner which increases, so it can't be, it can't be enlarged or altered in any manner which increases its non-conformity, but it can be altered to decrease it, or if it stays, you know, we've interpreted that to say that, well, if you're altering it, and maybe the non-conformity is that you don't meet the front yard setback, but you're doing addition off the back, well, we wouldn't view that as altering or enlarging the non-conformity, because you're not expanding into that area in the front.
But if you're adding onto a duplex in a single-family zone...
Yeah, and that would be covered by the next section, but yeah, there's, it wouldn't be allowed. You're essentially limited to the exact footprint that you have today type of thing. And then this one, you know, says that if it's destroyed by seventy percent or more, the replacement cost, essentially, the new one that gets rebuilt has to conform to the provisions of the code. If it's ever removed, it has to conform. But then we also have this repairs and maintenance section at the very end of the non-conforming chapter, which says that you're allowed to have ordinary repairs, replacement of non-bearing walls, fixtures, wiring, or plumbing may be done on a non-conforming structure, non-conforming portion of a structure, provided that the volume of the structure existing when it became non-conforming shall not be increased. So what that leads you to, to figure out is that you can't increase it at all. I mean, if you're doing, if you have a non-conforming structure, and you're trying to do an addition off the back, it's pretty much saying that you can't increase the volume of the structure, so that would, you know, mean to contradict this, that you can do it as long as it doesn't increase it type of thing. So, you know, in this circumstance, we've got, this is, it's either Landec or Westburg, it's a law office, this is Veatch Street right here, this is actually the car wash we were just talking about, so. Right now, there's, I believe this parcel's in motor business, because of its association with the highway. We've got a ten-foot setback on the front and the street side, so this building's currently right up to the property line. So it'd be a non-conforming structure in that it doesn't meet the front or the street side setback requirements. And so, you know, going back to this section, and repairs or maintenance, they wouldn't even be able to do an addition off the backside that met all, you know, current zoning requirements and setback requirements, because they have a non-conforming setback on the front. So that, you know, is, in our minds, a real issue, if you don't, you have that investment, you have the existing building, and you're not able to do any type of addition or expansion, you know, that meets current zoning code setback requirements. It's just that the existing portion doesn't. So we would view that as kind of an issue that we've run into a few, quite a few times over the last few years, and it's mainly garages that are built up to the property line and things of that nature, but, you know, these are kind of higher investment properties that would be running into kind of the same issue on that. And then, and then we have, you know, non-conforming uses of structures, or structures in combination. It just says that you can't, if you have an existing structure with a use in it that's not permitted in the zone, you can't enlarge it, extend it, reconstruct it, you know, do an addition, move it, structurally alter it, except in changing to the use, so you're limited to anything you can do in that structure unless you convert it to a single-family dwelling. And then it says that, you know, you can do things on the inside, you know, do, put maybe partition walls up and things of that nature, but it can't extend to the outside of the building, you can't do any addition. And then it says if it's, you know, replaced, it just has to conform to the current regulations, and then if it ceased for an, you know, or abandoned for a period of six months, or for eighteen months during a three-year period, you know, the hard part is tracking these, so maybe it becomes vacant, and we get a complaint saying that, you know, there are some of these out there that people don't like a duplex in their single-family zone, and so they'll, you know, every time it comes up for sale and it sits vacant for a period, they'll be, start the clock, and, you know, you don't run into it very often, but that's a pretty tough position to say that, well, you couldn't sell it for seven months and it sat vacant for that time, so now all of a sudden you've got to come in and gut the kitchens and convert it all the way back to a single-family dwelling. You know, it just, it's a bit draconian, you know, frankly, in this day and age. And then we just define what destruction is, seventy percent of the replacement value, so. We had taken a look at a few other jurisdictions about how they do it, and they were all a lot more liberal than we currently are, so oftentimes, if you have a single-family dwelling, what our code currently says is, even if you don't meet the minimum lot size or minimum lot width, you're still able to rebuild a single-family dwelling. So, you know, in this circumstance, if you have a duplex or multifamily residence, and a lot of these are geared towards residential type development, because I think that's where you see, you know, at least with the uses, the large part of the non-conformities is residential. So what Spokane says is that it can be rebuilt if it's damaged or partially destroyed, as long as it doesn't, the footprint doesn't expand, so if it's essentially the same footprint as what you had before, they're gonna allow you to rebuild it. So if you had maybe a single-family home, or a duplex that's twenty-four hundred square feet in size, and it was destroyed, you wouldn't be able to come in and build a duplex that's five thousand square feet in size, so it has some restrictions on the size, and some of the other ones are similar in that they allow them to be rebuilt. It's just that you have to keep it to the same, around the same footprint.
The last sentence...
I like the last sentence.
Could be a stickler if it was partly non-conforming, because it didn't provide adequate parking.
Yeah, this is mainly towards, geared towards uses. If it doesn't, you know, the way our non-conforming parking section works is it's pretty lenient. You know, if it gets destroyed, then you have to, if you rebuild, then you have to have the adequate, you know, have to have adequate parking. But, you know, say you do an addition, so maybe you have a commercial property, and you don't have any parking at all, and you do an addition that requires four stalls. We don't make you go back and retroactively make up for what you should have had, plus the four stalls, it's just the four stalls. So, say they originally needed ten stalls. We don't make you go back and put in ten, plus the new four that you need, it's just the four that are part of the addition, so. Yeah, it's been pretty lenient, but we're, you know, in the process of going through the non-conforming section of our parking, since we're going through our parking regulations right now, we could certainly take another look at that, see if it's an issue, but, but I do, you know, they allow it to be rebuilt, should it be destroyed or damaged, but then they, you know, same footprint, but then they, you know, if it had non-conforming parking, they require you to put the current parking in, which is, you know, usually pretty good to have them put the parking in. Standpoint, saying that it's destroyed, not torn down by the owner, it can be, you know, reconstructed. I guess they have issuance of a non-conforming use permit, as long as it's equally appropriate appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use. There's no increase in noise, much of nuisances. They go, I guess they require you to go through a conditional use permit in order to do that. So Spokane would just be that, well, you can rebuild it. Going through a conditional use permit, you'd probably have a lot of speculation, you know, I don't think you'd solve really the issue of banking these days, because they'd really look at it, well, if it's destroyed or torn down, you know, Spokane, yeah, it can be rebuilt, it just has to be the same footprint, you have to provide parking. Standpoint, yeah, I guess it can be, but you have to go through a conditional use permit, so you'd have people speculating on, well, can I get a conditional use permit, just so I can get a loan type of thing, so we'd have a flood of conditional use permits for the ones that are in, you know, those zones that maybe don't allow it. So that was one thing that we did, you know, trying to weigh, what if we were to just allow it, you know, with some restrictions by right, or if we were to allow it through the conditional use permit process. That was kind of the negative we had thought of with the CUP.
Yeah, and would the mortgage issuer's attitude be if there's a good point where the city can say no, they'll assume that the city will say no?
Yeah, they'd make them go through the process prior to the destruction of it, you know, they would, it'd just be speculation type of thing, just so they could have that on the property and running with the land, so. Looking at Pullman, pretty, pretty similar to the others.
Similar to the parking issue that Joel...
Parking needs to conform, but they allow the reconstruction with the same non-conformities as what the existing structure is. And then Boise, should be lost when a non-conforming structure, structure architect by non-conforming uses destroyed by fire or other calamity, extend cost restoration fifty percent or more assessed value, except upon issuance of a CUP. Absent of CUP, the structure or property is subject to extent zoning regulations, so they're requiring a CUP on those in Boise. So it's, you know, it seems like most of these jurisdictions allow it in one way or the other, it's just a matter of going through a conditional use permit, or just allowing it by right, maybe having some restrictions on the size and adding the parking. So, you know, this is just something that we've ran into over the years, and it's really been a hardship on a lot of people that are in this circumstance, and it, especially, you know, with maybe duplexes and single-family zones, the city allowed them to be constructed and then subsequently downzone the area. And then with the structures and the whole not being able to expand, just because they don't meet the setback requirements, I think is a real issue, so this is just something that's been on our radar and wanted to bring it forward, to see if you wanted us to take a look at, you know, maybe changing it.
So what do you all think? It sounds good to me. Yeah, it seems like a lot of people are in limbo, you know, and would help clarify their circumstances.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a good idea, certainly for the residential stuff. I was just wondering if we wanna, if we wanna leave a CUP requirement for expansion, like you were talking of, a commercial enterprise. I mean, that, I don't think that's as unreasonable as it is with a residence, that if somebody wants to, has a non-conforming business use going, that if they want to expand it, or do something other with it, that they might have to, it might be okay for them to go through a CUP.
Okay.
Other comments?
So if it's a non-conforming use, business use, then CUP.
But if it's a non-conforming structure, like in the example of the law office that we saw, that's not a non-conforming use, correct? Yeah, the law office would be allowed, it would be the non-conforming structure. So they could expand without going through a CUP, but, okay.
If they met the code.
Yeah, so we looked at changing the structure, non-conforming structure requirements, then, yeah. Makes sense.
So, yeah, it sounds like you should pursue this. Sounds good. So I have one question before we adjourn, which is, shared readings, is it something we want to keep up? And if so, what topics? We sort of had an underwhelming performance the last time we did shared readings in terms of participation, so I'm just wondering. I think, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just wonder what topics and whether you would like to continue doing it. Maybe start with the question of, would you like to continue to do shared readings?
I think it's a great idea, that I have hardly ever participated in.
I wonder if we could structure it in a way that we kind of target the shared reading to something that's an issue that we're working with, or working on, or know that we're...
That has been the intent, but I don't know if we always hit the mark. Sometimes our, we progress, you know, with what we're doing, and the shared reading is back here. But I don't know if, well, what about complete streets? Is that something that's gonna come to us in any way, shape, or form? Should we be more educated in knowing what those are? Or does everybody pretty much know what complete streets are?
No.
If no, why then...
Maybe have a couple short articles on complete streets?
Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, that was one that came to mind, but, you know, but I agree with you, Rob. That is the intent. It doesn't always work with the schedule by the time, because it seems like we allow a really long time for the shared readings, and we move faster with our agendas sometimes, but. And other topics, too, that, I don't know if there's anything, and non-conformities might... might show up too fast, but what do you see out on the horizon?
Yeah, I think complete streets would be a great one, but I'd have to think, I, we don't want things that are too dry, I think non-conformities...
Okay, complete streets is inspirational, so...
You're so good at non-conformities.
Well, it seems to like, as, as we move along the way, somehow our education and readings and ways to, should focus on growth of the, of the city, and whether that growth is interior growth at Legacy Crossing, or whether it's interior or exterior growth on the edge of town. Those are the hot things that I think we need to continue to be, where I continue to be. I suppose I'm always surprised that everyone on the edge of town is always so shocked that the town is growing. Little by little, mind you, not much, but a little by little, and maybe the fact that it's growing little by little is what bothers people, but, so those are the first two. Well, as you see those kinds of issues, those are the things where I think we could put up a light for ourselves and maybe focus on, on some of those kinds of, of things. You know, you just don't. We're, we're this little town, since we don't grow much, we're, we've been sort of blessed. We don't get to make much money and we don't grow but much, but we're, it makes our town a lot more livable and a lot more, kind of a pleasant place than those places that grow dramatically, I guess you could say. But I, somehow, we, those are the things that we ought to, I just keep looking out at that, the property toward the northwest, all that land, and wondering, you know, how we should prepare ourselves to think about that. As you look out there and see the big houses that have been built out there, you see that movement, and I was just telling you before the meeting that I, my wife and I decided, oh, let's go on a trip, let's take this road and see where it ends over in, and as you drive out that way, you don't see any, I mean, the minute you cross Paradise Ridge, there's not another fancy house, you know, out there somewhere. Yet, as you look toward Moscow Mountain, they are there. And so I was intrigued that you can drive across the county and it's pretty desolate out there. I mean, other than wheat fields, you know, it's, which is just fine. But as we look at how the, it would appear to me that this town wants to grow toward Moscow Mountain, I think that's what it wants to do. And any of the, any kind of topics that we could do readings on or help each other think about, that's, that's where I'd like to...
So do you want to try to ferret out some good readings?
I just don't know what that...
But maybe we'll start with the complete streets since no, since we need to be educated on the issue of what complete streets are, just maybe a couple of short articles.
Yeah, the complete streets are great.
Right, right, right.
For me, I think that's a wonderful topic.
But I agree with you, because there is this sort of, in a sense, you see these proposals coming through that seem to contribute to orderly growth, but they are an expansion of the edge, and, you know, and that's a choice that we've made rather than a densified infill to a large extent, and...
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I just wish, I'm, I'm back to, I'm a New York crazed person, as some of you know, and I, I've been asked to lead a retirees group to New York City in the fall, we're getting repaired. And as I, I was reminded that somehow the Manhattan grew in this unique way by the city fathers just said, okay, we're going to draw this map, this is the way we're going to grow, period. And they laid it out on the land, and the developers, that's what they did. As you bought land, you had to deal with that. And Washington DC, in a sense, did the same thing, did up a big plan. Well, we don't do that anymore, we just crawl along and hope that someone or developer will magically do wonderful things for us. And, and then we're always shocked to find out that that might not always happen. And so you do wonder, I realize that life has changed, but I think we know where we're going to grow. We've tried, you know, we tried to grow, the university talked about developing those hills behind the dairy barn, but it just has never gone anywhere at all. There didn't seem to be any interest at all there, even though if you cross the border toward Pullman, you see people building in those hills on Airport Road. Anyway, I'm just mentioning that, I don't have a specific immediate thing, but as, as we look down the way, you know, I always appreciated when we worked on the comp plan, that Walter really struggled with the ring road, and he caused lots of heartache all around town, but at least it forced a lot of discussion about how we might grow. And I, I think some of those issues would be intriguing to, to deal with, and we can figure out how to, how to sort of package them for a couple hours here and a couple hours there as we get ready for that, because some of you younger people will be here at this table for a while. I will be gone soon.
No, I hope not, Nels. Okay, but we probably all want to be gone for the evening, I guess we're sure. Thank you.